Well, welcome back everyone. For those that have just come, we did have our six o'clock public meeting. We had our six thirty closed meeting and we'll just continue on. So at this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to report out from the closed meeting on my behalf, please.
Thank you, your worship. And that is in relation to legal item zero two of two thousand twenty five, that there will be no further action taken by council. The exemption request is not approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, we'll go to item number nine, which is the consideration of the minutes of a previous meeting held on September eighth. I'd like to ask for motion to put that on the floor for discussion. I need a move in a second and move by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. Any discussion regarding those minutes, errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And that'll take us to the moment of reflection. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to the round table. And first, we start with tonight councillor Wells, please.
Goodness, that was quick. The only thing I want to put out there is the shop like Charlotte next Friday, I volunteer for it. It is so much fun. If you don't have a ticket, you should get one.
Thank you. That is a big event. Councillor Patel's not here. We'll move to councillor O'Hara, please.
Last Saturday, I attended the Harvest Dinner. That was really well attended. I believe it was sold out, wasn't it? Yeah, very good. That's all.
Thank you. And it was a great event. Councillor Clark.
I don't have anything.
At this time, councillor Hyatt.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
I think at this time, again, Deputy Mayor Field is ill tonight and unable to attend. I do have a few things I want to bring to your attention. I attended the grand opening of the Hospital Dream Home at ten seventy-seven Manhattan Drive in Sarnia on Wednesday, September tenth. It was a great day with a very well-attended event as well. I attended the Petroleum Water Treatment Plant in Brights Grove multi-year intake project for sixteen point two million dollars on Thursday, September the twelfth. Special thanks to MP Marilyn Gladu, MPP Bob Bailey, the warden and mayor Kevin Merritt of Anisgillan Township, Mayor Ian Veen of Oil Springs, Mayor Al Broad of Doniafemia, Mr. Stuart Winchester, P Engineer for SEMA, the SEMA staff representative from Stone Town Construction Limited, Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, and his staff who attended for making this one of Petroleum's most important events possible. I'd also like to thank the Petroleum councillor who also attended. And it was a great day and it was just, it was really a great turnout for this event. I also had the pleasure in attending the seventh annual Farm to Table Harvard Fest, as councillor O'Hara mentioned, on Saturday, September thirteenth, at Petroleum Farmers Market Pavilion. Culinary catering prepared the meal from the Petroleum Farmers Market vendors and area farmers. It was a fantastic meal. And again, special thanks to Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, and all her staff, other municipal staff, volunteers, entertainment by Cabin Fever, and sponsors that made this great event possible. And I hope I didn't leave anyone out. I took part in the Committee of Lampton County Council on Wednesday, September seventeenth, and will continue to keep council informed. I also have a copy of the Inn of the Good Shepherds two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five impact report available for anyone interested in reading it. I presented a check for five thousand dollars on behalf of council and staff to the YMCA, to Mr. Wade Babula, General Manager, and Mr. Joe Sobelski, South Western Ontario Regional Manager, on Wednesday, September seventeenth, for the Community Starts Here program. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, and Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication were also in attendance. I attended the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority in Strathroy on Thursday, September eighteenth, and will also keep council informed. I attended the TD Bank Tree Event held at the Oil Museum in Oil Springs on Saturday, September twentieth. Again, it was another great event, great turnout. Congratulations to the representatives from the TD Bank who sponsored and paid for all the trees, County of Lampton, and the members from the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. And I took part in the Tourism Sarnia Lampton Sport Hosting Seminar in Sarnia on Wednesday, September seventeenth, at the Four Points in Petroleum or Point Edward. It turned out to be very informative. And that's all I have for tonight. That will move us on now for updates from the committees and councillors. Tonight, we start with the Parks and Recreation Committee. We have councillor Clark and councillor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to lead that or speak to that before we deal with the minutes? Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
Again, thank you. So the minutes are attached. They're pretty detailed. So we kind of looked at some budget conceptual ideas for two thousand twenty-six, so some projects, kind of some ideas are listed in there. And then we also heard a presentation from the hockey parents. They have formed a new committee called the Care Committee. They've had a few meetings and some follow-up per some of the guidance that was provided in Parks Advisory Committee previously, and they brought back a follow-up to that original meeting. So it was great to hear back from them. It seems like they've got some steam behind them and getting some momentum built up. So that is working out, so.
Thank you councillor Hyatt. And that is, I'm really pleased to hear that's moving ahead. I'm also pleased with the idea of a future dog park that we've talked about for a number of years. Would you like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Please.
Seconded by councillor Clark. Any discussion from council regarding those minutes? See, that'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. Trying to remember to get you to read it. That'll take us to the Petroleum North Anisgillan Fire Committee. We have councillor Hyatt and councillor O'Hara. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on that one? Councillor Hyatt, you're up again. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the last meeting we had, we heard a presentation from Lydia related to a decontamination facility in the fire hall, really looking at conceptual ideas for what we could do and where they could be located. So we have, we approved some funds to go towards that study for the initial study for the design concept. Second big topic for that was looking at the budget, proposed budget for two thousand twenty-six. A few modifications were made but otherwise approved for presentation for the further town budget as that goes forward. And then we also seen a demonstration from Chief Cousins and a few other members from the fire department related to the differences between a custom cab and a regular cab, I guess we'll call it, in terms of space in a engine or a tanker, etc. So we got a physical demonstration and had some further discussions related to the pumper truck specification.
Thank you councillor Hyatt. Would you like to make a motion to approve those minutes? It's councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor O'Hara. Any discussion regarding those minutes? I will get back on track. I'll ask the clerk to read those minutes, please. Or read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to endorse this presented minutes of the Petroleum and North Anisgillan Fire Committee meeting held on July night twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That takes us to the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board. Our rep is Deputy Mayor Field, who's not available. These three items are listed. I'd like to ask for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Welsh. Any discussion from council? I'll just ask the clerk, Mrs. Pearson, do you have anything you'd like to add regarding those minutes? And there's a number of items there.
Yes, certainly, your worship. I think the one, two items that navigate out is the use of any of the cannabis funding so that it doesn't go by the wayside. And then the motions of support that municipalities pass to forward to MPP Bailey in relation to continued support for the provincial statement of municipal policing, not the OPP detachment statement, but the overall municipal statement that will be coming forward shortly. So I think that was very positive to see that all municipalities supported that and requesting that the province continue to fund those differences.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And I agree, that is very important, and I'm glad you clarified that. Any other discussion from council? Did I get a motion for that? I'm sorry. Did I have a motion to put that on the floor? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before you, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file the update on the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board meeting held August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority, and I have just been reappointed back on that. I just want to state that we did meet last week. They've gone through a full compensation review. There's the A.W. Campbell are going through the master plan, and they did talk briefly about preparing their budget that will be coming to our council for consideration in the near future. And I'll just, I guess I'll ask for a motion from council to approve those highlights. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask Mrs. Pearson to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file Mayor Luise's update on the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority meetings held in both April and June of two thousand twenty-five.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Lampton Historical Society. And there's a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file the August meeting package in June, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes of the Lampton Historical Society.
And I see the Petroleum here, these advisory committees, the representative, do the representatives from councillor Welsh or O'Hara, have anyone liked to speak to that?
I was not in attendance at that meeting. Another member went, and I haven't spoken with them yet.
Okay, councillor here, no, nothing. Okay, all right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That takes us now to our Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee, and our appointed rep is Mr. Leland Martin, who is not present here tonight, but he was appointed by council. There's a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. By councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee meeting items as provided by town representative, Mr. Leland Martin.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any discussion regarding those minutes before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. And again, I was pleased to see those minutes come from the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee. That'll take us to the Municipal Services and Traffic. Our liaison member is Deputy Mayor Joel Field, who's not present. Our alternate is councillor Hyatt. There is a motion before you. Before I call upon councillor Hyatt, would you like to put that motion on the floor for discussion? Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. Councillor Hyatt, would you like to speak to that, please?
Oh, yeah, I think there's some pretty good notes here for this one, but I guess the most prevalent project where, you know, might be visible around town is the Water of the Main Project on Petroleum, snarling some traffic every once in a while, but work has started. So that is a good project underway. Number two, asphalt work on First Ave and sidewalk work in that area. When we popped in for Meet the Teacher, my son told me we needed to move over there because it was the smoothest road in town. And a few other projects listed there, but those are kind of the two bits, so.
Thank you councillor Hyatt. And I'm really pleased to see that project move ahead. And hopefully, that project will continue at no cost to the taxpayers. So that's great news. Do you like to, sorry, I did get a motion on that, did I?
Your worship, yes.
Any further discussion? I'll call the vote. Now, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on now to Planning and Development. Our liaison members are councillor, deputy mayor Field, councillor Hyatt. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. Since Deputy Mayor Field isn't here, councillor Hyatt, floor's yours again.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, I think the list for this one is pretty self-explanatory related to development. Talks about, you know, some of the applications that are in and some of the works that are ongoing in the background. And I think the development team is doing a pretty good work to support those developments.
And again, in two thousand twenty-three, we had seven point six million in development. Two thousand twenty-four was ten. This year, to the end of August, we're at four point eight. So I'm really hoping some of that will pick up before the end of the year. Would you like to read that motion?
Certainly. And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file councillor Hyatt's update on planning and development happenings.
Any further discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to item number thirteen, which is the correspondence. We have items A to H, thirteen A to H. So I'll ask for a move in a second to put those items on for discussion. Moved by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file correspondence items thirteen A through H.
Okay, councillor Welsh.
I'd like to pull out D and H together and E.
Which one? Sorry?
D and H.
E and H.
Could be done together and then E.
Okay, so then we will have A to H, except for D and H. We'll deal with them separately. Is that your wishes?
And D.
And D?
E.
E, sorry. So D, E, and H.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and, so we do have a motion on the floor, your worship. That's, I guess, the motion as moved was to receive and file correspondence A through A. So if we can withdraw that motion, and if there's a new motion to hear with those excluding.
Okay, so we can either have an amendment or does a move in a second or agree to withdraw that original motion and have a new motion that will delete, take those other out. Are you okay for that? All right, so then I'll entertain a new motion, which will be A to H's, except we'll take out D, E, and H. So I'll need a move in a second for that. Moved by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk just to read that motion so we're all clear, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroleum to receive and file the correspondence items as highlighted, excluding items D, E, and H.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. Now, moving on to you, councillor Welsh. We'll do with D first. Or you want to do D and H together?
D and H could be done together.
Okay.
My usual recommendation that we acknowledge and support both for Francis and the township of Woolwich regarding their letters for strong mayor's powers for legislation.
I'll need a second for that. Seconded by councillor Hyatt. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. And then that'll take us to E. And I'll call upon councillor Welsh again, please.
Yep. So I actually had an opportunity. I spoke with one of our members on the Family Health Team Board and asked them about this. And while our family health team is very well represented by all of the communities that are involved with the family health team, there are, obviously, from this letter, communities that are not well represented by all the community, or boards who are not represented by all the communities in their family health team model. So I would move that we support this letter from the township of Armour, and that we also forward to our MPP and inform the township of Armour that we support there.
Okay, so a letter of support. I'll need a second for that. You have a second for that? Seconded by councillor Clark. Open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Councillor Hyatt.
Is there any chance that our health team could reach out to them and teach them something about how we do it, or?
So what they're looking for is a standard governance model for all the family health teams so that it's not pick and choose. So our family health team has it in their own mandate that they must represent all of the communities. But I guess that is not standardized across the province.
Is there any risk that what the province generates would have a detrimental effect with the way we're doing it here? No risk?
Not if they just ask them to have all the communities represented.
Right.
Real quick.
Go ahead.
Just to the family health team that I think it's been some time since they've come and presented to council. So I expect to see that them calling up to do that at some point.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right, I'll call the vote. Are we clear on that? Everybody's clear? Or do I need that read? Are you okay? Have you got something there?
I don't have one submitted, so I think we're clear on the intent, yes.
Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll move us now down to correspondence for consideration motion. There is none for tonight. That'll bring us to a delegation and presentation. And it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Janice McMichael-Dennis. Ask her to come forward for the two thousand twenty-four annual report. I do want to mention that we did receive a report. We've all read it, so I think you can skim through this fairly quickly, but the floor is yours and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Luise. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council and the Austin team of Petroleum. It's always a pleasure to be here with my friends in Petroleum and be able to address you. Given your words, Mayor Luise, I will run through it quickly, and I'll just hit some highlights if that's okay. But I am, of course, available at your leisure to take any questions. I do want to send regrets from Brad Goodhill, Eurodirector. He had a fire meeting, a joint fire meeting, and was unable to take, to join us. We always take seconds to fire. Everybody loves a good fireman, right? So it is my pleasure to provide you with a two thousand twenty-four update on behalf of the company which you own, Blue Water Power Group of Companies. Let's whip through and let's move right to the two thousand twenty-four numbers, which is slide number three. And we'll move to our first important number, really the only important number at the end of the day. Oh, sorry about that. And that would be the next slide. Thank you. Two point four million hours worked without a lost time injury. Almost ten years, over nine years. That is the most important number that we generate in any period because the well-being of our people is paramount to everything we do. Our excellence and safety practices lead the way to sustainable success. And every decision we make really reflects this unwavering commitment to protect our greatest asset, which is, of course, our people. Safety isn't a slogan at Blue Water Power. We really do live it. It's not a quite, it's not even a priority or a core value. It is truly our mandate, and it comes first in every single hour of the day. The nice thing is when the financial numbers also coincide with the safety numbers. So if you were onto the next slide, just going to hit a few things there. Two thousand twenty-four represented an all-time extraordinary high when it came to not only safety performance first and foremost, but financial results. We hit all-time high net income numbers up over six percent from the year before, two thousand twenty-three. And two thousand twenty-three, you may remember, was also a record-setting year. So we blew that record out of the water and set a new one. We had gross revenue over one hundred and fifty-five million despite the profitability. We also had rate decreases. We will never ever bring to you success on the backs of our ratepayers. We do it in terms of our other competitive businesses. Power reliability of almost ninety-nine percent because we know we're only as good as when the lights are on. And of course, as a result of all this, the highest municipal returns in our history. We can flip it over, please. Thank you. And as I said, so important to us, never at the expense of utility bills. We've actually had a ten percent reduction in Blue Water Power bills over ten-year period. Over that ten-year period, if you look at inflation alone, it's over thirty percent. I think it's thirty-four and change, if I'm not mistaken. Not only did Blue Water Power not increase by inflation, we didn't even stand still. We actually had a ten percent bill reduction over the last decade. So something that we're really proud of, and I couldn't be more proud of, to be able to stand here and say all-time high profitability with a ten percent rate reduction over the last ten years. We really have a long-term model of success, and it's driven completely and totally by our people. It's really the key to making everything happen. And we can move on to the next slide, please. Just a couple of things that are important to us. We never forget our bread and butter. As I said, when the lights are on, or when we are most valued, we've reinvested over a hundred million dollars in infrastructure because we need to have the poles, the wires in the air in order to deliver the power that our residents and businesses need. We're also a really strong community partner. That is so important to who we are at Blue Water Power. It's really in the fabric of what we do. It's so important that we're not just the people who send you your bill every month. We want to be a very proud partner to local organizations. And anything that's important to the community, it's important to us. I'm pleased to say that the revenue from other lines of business has grown almost thirty-five times. And that's why we can do what we do. That's why we can be a strong community partner. That's why we can boast some all-time high financial results, and yet also talk about a rate decrease for our utility customers. If you flip it to the next slide, this is what our BP success story looks like. This is when you innovate and when you strive for success, and you think outside the box, and you try to bring more to your community. That's what happens there. That is the group of companies that you you all now are part owners of, I'm very proud to say. And this integrated success model really brings to our communities, to your municipal residents, to your taxpayers, a really strong story and model of success for our community. Let me get that to the next one. What's translated to in terms of dollars? Sixty-five million dollars that Blue Water Power has returned directly to local taxpayers via our municipal owners. And that would include all municipal owners, of course, being jointly held by our community members. And on top of that, your investment is almost five times what it was. So way back years ago, when you looked at the decision whether to retain Petroleum PUC or move it into the Sarnia Hydro merger, what was to become Blue Water Power, your investment is now five times where it was, in addition to receiving your pro-rata share of sixty-five million dollars. So proud to say that when it comes to Blue Water Power, this is where corporate success equals community well-being. If I flip it to the next screen, I just want to share with you the fact that we've been very active in the province as well. I couldn't have been more pleased to be elected by my peers across Ontario to be the Chair of the Board for electricity distributors in the province. And something that I'm very proud of, that I can bring our voice, the voice of Lampton County, the voice of Petroleum and Friends, to the GTA boardrooms. And super proud to be able to reflect our community values there down on Young Street. I'm also pleased to say that our Human Resources Director, our Health and Safety Director, they also sit on provincial-wide committees. And again, we want to be out there at the forefront of the industry. We want to be out there, and we want to be able to shape decisions because decisions made in Toronto for the province flow through to every one of our communities. And that's so important for us to be able to say, you know what, we just had a really big impact on something that was going to flow through to our communities. So very proud to be able to share that sector leadership with you. Our Board of Directors on the next slide, so key to what we do. The board has been absolutely essential and cornerstone, really, of our strategic success. What I do is so very small. It's the people who I get to work with. And then the fact that I can serve the board who reports through to our shareholders is really an absolute privilege for me. I really can't stress enough that that Board of Director relationship to Blue Water Power is so important to helping enable our success and to making things happen. Brad Goodhill is just an overall great guy, for lack of a more technical term, just a really great guy. And I'm very fortunate that you have, that you have appointed him and that I get to work with him. We'll close it all up. We like to say that Blue Water Power is made with love in Lampton County. If we can move to the next slide, which is the final slide, and a quick review, just to tie it all together. The most important thing that happened in two thousand twenty-four, well, we were safe. Everybody went home safe and sound to their families. We generated all-time high financial returns to our community. We hit unprecedented levels of profitability. We did not do it on the backs of the ratepayers. We actually brought bills down. We exceeded all of our targets of profitability, and we grew our assets beyond where we had planned. We've exerted significant influence at the provincial level. Our customer satisfaction ratings were over ninety percent. When someone thinks of you as the bill that they receive every month, the hydro bill, and you can boast a ninety-two percent customer satisfaction level, I know that my people are doing something right. We've had outstanding utility results, and to wrap it all up, exceptional community support, something that we're very, very proud of. We like to be known as the local partner who helps make things happen. So we're celebrating the success of two thousand twenty-four. Pleased to share it with you this evening. And we're not going to rest on our laurels. We're not going to sit still. We're going to take those results, and we're going to strive even higher in two thousand twenty-five. And I hope to be standing here next year at this time and being taught and telling you that we once again knocked it out of the park. So it is my absolute privilege to work with So it is my absolute privilege to work with Blue Water Power and to serve the town of Petroya, who is such a wonderful municipality, and it's my pleasure to be able to bring you good news from your owned organization.
Well, thank you. If I can call you Janice and the reason, and before I open it up to council, I just want to go back a little bit. Councillor O'Hara was the mayor at that time when we actually went with Blue Water Power. And you would remember it well, and that was probably one of the best things we did. I want to really thank you. Of all the meetings I go to, I love coming to your meetings because the last few years, everything is better than the year before. I love it. It's great news. The town is doing very well and every year we budget an amount. It always comes in a little bit more, which is great news. But I really want to thank you for the, also your support in other areas, from the 150 to other major projects that you do in this community without a lot of recognition, and I appreciate that.
Thanks.
I'll stop there and I'll open it up to council. Any questions from council? We're a happy bunch. Councillor Welsh.
Listen to comment. Kudos on your customer communications, always.
Thank you.
You're on top of everything and poor Sparky the squirrel.
Thank you, Councilor Welsh. Thank you. It's really important to Blue Water Power that our social media reflect the personality. We didn't want to be just the same old, same old. So Sparky was my creation when I was bored on a Sunday. So thank you for recognizing the demise.
We apologize for not being able to attend the memorial.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mandy.
Any other questions from council? I'll just add one more before I get, Mr. Shalabah reminded me and I'm glad he did. I also want to thank you for the project for King Street next year on moving those poles for the town. That's a huge and you know, it's a huge savings for the town of Petroy. So thank you.
Our pleasure. We are always as close as your phone. Mayor Luise, you've always been such a big supporter of mine and a big supporter of Blue Water Power. I can't thank you enough. And former Mayor O'Hara, thank you for making the right decision way back when, together with Mayor Luise and retaining your PUC in the form of Blue Water Power. It's my pleasure to report to you and thank you for your service.
Okay. Thank you for coming to address council. All right. Next on our agenda, we do have a presentation from Amanda Pepping for the P Engineer, which is the Senior Project Manager for SEMA for the Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant Intake. And are we doing that one online, Mrs. Pearson?
So if you give us just a few moments, Jessica will connect through and we will see Amanda virtually here before us.
Thank you for coming.
Evening. Well, that's not Amanda, but we will see Stuart virtually before us here. He's also, he's who we.
Oh, there he is.
Yes. There's an Amanda. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can't hear you.
Amanda, could you try to speak just to see if it's on our end or if it's perhaps.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
You can, yes.
Okay. Maybe just take your headset off.
Give me a thumbs up just when you're ready.
We're just, Stuart is doing some troubleshooting on his end. We think he may be having some technical difficulties with his headset.
Stuart, did you want to try to leave the meeting and come back in? Maybe once you change your audio input?
All right. I just messaged Stuart and asked if he would like me to jump in for him. I don't know if he's going to get, if you get your issues resolved, Stuart, just free to jump in. Did we want to put the, the slideshow on the screen?
Absolutely. Just a moment here. I'll just share it from my end.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear.
Okay. First of all, I want to welcome you and thank you for coming, for both you and Mr. Winchester. We appreciate you coming to go through this with council notes present and I'll turn the floor over to you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much for having us. Stuart was going to do, do the bulk of the talking, but I'll jump in and do my best to fill his shoes. So we have put together a bit of a presentation here. So just going to give an update tonight on the contract T2501, the Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant Intake Replacement Project. Next slide. It's just a bit of, bit of an agenda for the presentation. So we'll speak to the scope of the upgrades, the tendering process, the construction schedule, the groundbreaking ceremony that was had the other week, and then we'll speak to the construction progress to date. Next slide. All right. So just a bit, a bit of an update. I know I've been before council a couple of times and have given this before, but just to touch briefly on the scope of the upgrades. So the project does include construction of a new 600 intake pipe extending approximately 380 meters into Lake Huron. It will be constructed using HDPE pipe. It includes construction of a new below-grade low lift pump station with a rated capacity of 12 MLD, or a million litres per day. A low lift pump station discharge valve chamber with a new 450 millimeter raw water main into the existing treatment building. And then a new pretreatment facility that will be installed within the original plant, which will function to remove grit and turbidity from the raw water prior to the membranes in order to extend the service life of those. Next slide. Just to touch on the tendering process. So the project was publicly tendered February 18th, 2025. On April 1st of 2025, the bids for the work were received from five pre-qualified construction companies. The lowest acceptable price was submitted by Stonetown Construction Limited of St. Mary's, Ontario, at a total tender price of $12,512,773.50. That's excluding HST. The contract was subsequently awarded to Stonetown Construction Limited on April 15th of 2025. And the construction kickoff meeting was held on April 28th of 2025. Next slide. In terms of construction schedule, we were, have already completed site preparation and shoring install. This was completed between May and July of 2025. Currently, we're undertaking construction of the low lift pump station. This started in around August and is expected to continue through until January of 2025. Yard piping installation is expected to take place in February of 2026. And then installation of process and electrical equipment from March and April 2026. Installation of the intake pipe itself for the in-water works are scheduled to occur between May and July of 2026. Startup and commissioning of the plant then will take place in August to September 2026. And this is when we will achieve substantial performance of the work by September 30th of 2026. And finally, site restoration and cleanup anticipated to occur in October of 2026. Next slide. And so we, there was an official groundbreaking ceremony which was held at the site just the other week. I know a number of, a number of folks were in attendance. So the official groundbreaking ceremony, so that was September 12th, 2025. Attendees, attendees included MP Marilyn Gladu, MP Bob Bailey, as well as representatives from the town of Petroya, a town of Innisquillan, town of Don Euphemia, and the village of Oil Springs, Ontario Clean Water Agency, as well as SEMA and Stonetown Construction. Right, just, we've provided some photographs, just to kind of give a visual update of the construction progress to date. And so these are the, these photographs here do show the mobilization and site preparation work, which was undertaken in June of 2025. You can see there's the site prior to commencement and then once they had completed all of the site preparation and preparation for installation of the caisson shoring, and that is the photo on the right. Next slide. So for the next photos show the installation of the caisson shore, caisson shoring. So there is a very, very large excavation, for those who have been to the site, has been installed. So this was installed by using something called a caisson shoring. So it does involve a large drill rig, which then goes around and drills concrete caissons and then the contractor did excavate within there. So there's a photograph of the caisson drilling rig as well as of the completed excavation to the right. Next, next slide. So a portion of the intake pipe was installed by Jack and Bore Technology and that was completed in July of 2025. So this work generally, it's a trenchless installation method. And so what they did was they drilled and installed water main from the excavation on the water treatment plant site into the location of the manhole number two, which is going to be located in Lake Shore Road to the front of the site. So a portion of that intake pipe has been installed into Lake Shore Road and that was installed by these trenchless methods. So photographs just show the Jack and Bore of the, the process of the water main installation. Next slide. Construction progress. So the low lift pump station, so we've started construction of the low lift pump station. This was commenced in August of 2025. Photograph on the left shows the rebar installation and forming for the base slab. This was concrete pore number one of a series of concrete pores that will be happening as part of the low lift pump station project. And photograph on the right just shows that the concrete pore number one wall is underway. Next slide. And finally, these photos are from September of 2025. So this just shows some views from inside of the very large excavation, showing the rebar installation and forming of walls and preparation for concrete pore number two, which actually just took place on Friday. And finally, I do have one slide here, just to kind of give an update on the expenditure tracking to date. So the original concrete, an original contract value, as we mentioned earlier, $12,512,773.50. Cost incurred to date is as of August 30th of 2025, it's $2,312,542.88. So this does leave a remaining amount of $10,200,232.62. I think Stuart wanted me to touch on that. There was federal and provincial funding that was obtained as part of, to fund the project. And thank you.
With this, just before you leave, first of all, before I open it up to council, Mrs. Pepping, I want to thank you and Stuart, who unfortunately we didn't see much of, but for this review. I do want to state, this has been a very important project for me for the last number of years and I'm really pleased to see it moving ahead. And I want to thank you and your team to getting to this point and moving to where you are now. Because I know the first couple of years was kind of slow, get, you know, things going. But I think water is so important to this town and I'm really pleased to think that we're going to have probably one of the best, if not the best, water system in Ontario. So thank you for that. I will open it up now to council if you have any questions from Mrs. Pepping or any comments. No comments. Again, I want to thank you for addressing this council and we're really pleased with it. Carry on. And I'm looking forward to eventually watch the actual pipe drop into the water next year. So again, thank you for coming to address council. All right. Next is, it's my pleasure under community announcement, recognitions and awards. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Darren Allen for waiting and being patient and family. At this time, I'd like to ask you to come forward. I'd like to ask Chief Cousins to come forward. And our council representatives, Councillor Hyatt and Councillor Hera, please go down to, for this recognition. And I'll just, when we get organized, it's for 25 years, I will turn it over to our Fire Chief, Chief Cousins. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we have the honor of recognizing Deputy Chief Darren Allen for his 25 years of dedicated service to Petroy and North Innes County Fire Department. So over the course of his career, DC Allen has served with professionalism, leadership and unwear community commitment to the safety of our community. For responding to countless emergencies and guiding and mentoring the next generation of firefighters, his impact will be felt long after his retirement. This evening, on behalf of council in the Petroy, North Innes County Fire Department, we are proud to present DC Allen with his 25-year service medal. And this medal is assembled not only of his years of service, but of his dedication, sacrifice and respect he has earned from his colleagues in the community. So DC Allen, thank you for your 25 years of service and congratulations on your well-earned retirement.
Mr. Robb would like to say a few words before we get a picture and I do want the councillors at that picture, please. Would you like to say a few words?
No. Couldn't have done it without my family. They probably endured more hurting from this than, than me. And a couple of Christmases where I wasn't home. One New Year's Eve that I will definitely pay for because I was gone before midnight until probably noon the next day. So, yeah. I'm still.
Oh, part of the job. Again, congratulations and thank you.
Have a couple of things here to give first before. So it's a long service. A fire service long service medal is hereby awarded to Darren W. Allen in sincere appreciation. 25 years of courageous and dedicated service for the residents of Ontario, protecting their lives and property from fire. And that's from John Peg, Fire Marshal. And he has sent medal that will be added to the other three that's on his, oh, three. Yes, that's great. There. So sure, 25-year service medal. And then there's a couple of things here, one being from Petroy, which since Darren ordered some of these, he may have one already. 25-year pen. Serve that. And then this is another little lapel pen that some materials in for you. Okay, that's pretty nice. So, and then there's some stuff that was remaining there and they retired. You'll have to sew it on. No one else. So anyhow.
We'd like a picture. I want the councillors in the picture as well.
You had his medal. Rick, you can just kind of have him hold his medal.
Not a good idea. Not a good idea.
Shocked I made it this far.
Thank you, Chief Cousins and, oh, sorry. Thank you and congratulations, uh, Mr. Allen. Great, thank you for your service to the town and Innisquillen.
Deputy Chief now.
Deputy, Deputy Chief now retired. Okay, thank you. That'll take us to 16B. We've got the community announcements. We have a motion before you. I'll need a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Councillor Clark. Any discussion regarding that motion? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of Town of Petroy to receive his information only, the September 22nd, 2025, community announcements as presented.
And as usual, Mrs. Ellsworth, you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing at this time, Your Worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the first opportunity for the public to address council. Is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 18. We have uh, this is a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk Deputy Operations, regarding the 2026 Council and Advisory Committee Meeting Calendar for 2026. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroy to endorse the report regarding the 2026 Council and Advisory Committee Meeting Calendars as presented by Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Service.